...studies Imebo, Ogun State, to provide for teacher's side instruction and training of students in border management and for other matters connected therewith. Establishment Bill 266 2020, sponsored by no other but distinguished senator Tolu Adebi. The issue of adding value to the nation's border management and education sector in general are shared responsibility among the stakeholders which require mutual support and cooperation of all and sundry at all times. The Senate Committee on Tertiary Institution and Tech Fund is therefore reaffirming its commitment in rejuvenating the deplorable state of infrastructure, teaching and learning conditions in our tertiary institution via legislative instrument for a sound, virile, and vibrant system with enabled benefit for timid Nigerian youth, seeking for knowledge in particular and the good people of Nigeria in general. It is our collective desire and shared legislative values in the Senate to make the Nigerian education sector vibrant through proactive legislation and to ensure a more pragmatic, value-oriented system that is robust, affordable, and acceptable to use in the areas of border management, teaching and research for socioeconomic development of the country. Consequently, the establishment of the Institute for Border Studies will certainly go a long way in calibrating the spread of educational infrastructural need while balancing access to education among diverse demographics in the country thereby closing of the gap in border management, improve safety and security of the country's border, provide and secure, peaceful, and friendly neighbors, and enhance diplomacy with countries within the African subregion. The establishment of the Institute for Border Studies has numerous advantages in promoting business with comparative advantage and enhanced employment opportunities for the timid Nigerian graduate. As stakeholders in this transformative engagement, your energies and time are sacrosanct as part of your contribution and input in improving the quality of the bill before us to change the existing narrative built around the education sector for the greater good of all. While aligning its objective activities to reflect progressive educational... While aligning it is... The Nigerian country's border provides secure, peaceful, and friendly labels and intense diplomacy with countries within the African subregion. The establishment of the Institute for Border Studies has numerous advantages in promoting businesses and comparative advantage and enhanced employment opportunity for the Nigerian timid graduate. As stakeholder of this transformative engagement, your energies at this time are sacrosanct as part of your contribution and input in improving the quality of the bill before us to change the existing narrative built around the education sector for the greater good of all. While aligning its activities to reflect progressive educational policies of the incumbent administration and of all the expectation of Nigerians in the education sector. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, our guests, the growth of this public hearing is to aggregate stakeholders' views and opinion, extract strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats associated with the bill as input with a new... With a view to producing the necessary legislation that meet the yearning and aspiration of Nigerian people in education. Therefore, I urge you to brainstorm and make positive contributions towards achieving the desired objective for which the bill is subjected for public hearing and legislative scrutiny in the promotion of our educational needs of Nigerians. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, let me reaffirm the commitment of the nine senators under the ever leadership of the President of the Senate, His Excellency Dr. Ahmed Ibrahim Law. As I reaffirmed earlier, the establishment of the National Institute for Border Studies Imebo will definitely serve as a pathway for affordable educational resources centers of excellence in border management. Hence, the Senate Committee will continue to support tertiary institutions by enacting an billion laws to improve standard of higher education across the length and breadth of the country. On this note, the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institution and Tech Fund is therefore willing to set in motion mechanisms that will allow for improvement in all parts of our educational sector in the country for a better tomorrow. Before I conclude my speech, I must sincerely thank the Senate President, heavily represented hereby by our minority majority with, and allow for committee's invitation to send a representative and same goes to my colleagues who are here to render support to this laudable task. I also appreciate all invited dignitaries who made personal sacrifices to be here and contribute their quota to this public hearing. Once again, I thank you all.
My job here this morning is cut out for me. I'm standing in for our amiable distinguished Senate President who would love to be here, himself also having a border with the Nigerian Republic. But he has asked me to stand in for him, and I will do just that. There is a prepared speech which I will read, and after that I will make one or two comments of my own. Let me observe all protocols. I am pleased to be part of this public hearing on the bill for an act for the establishment of the National Institute for Border Studies Imebo, Ogun State, sponsored by my distinguished brother, friend, and colleague Senator Tolu Odebwe of Ogun West. Omobaba. This bill is yet another reminder of the importance of institutions. Institutions are the foundation for growth, development, and sustainable progress. They are even more important when they relate to critical sectors of the society like education, health, infrastructure, security, amongst others. The case for the National Institute for Border Studies is security-related and seeks to boost the quality of services offered by agencies at our borders. The borders are crucial in the administration of immigration and emigration. Aside from laws and regulations, the personnel will deploy also matter in determining performance. Integral to this is the learning, training, and research that will expose them to. While quality training may lead to improved performance, lack of good training may likely result in the reverse. For this, we cannot ignore the benefits of structured learning in any sector. This proposal is therefore welcome for its potential to set the image, the stage towards a better understanding of the complexities of border policing and the possibility of helping us do better in the management of our expansive borders. This is not just because of the size of our country, but also because of our growing population and the position we command as an economic hub in Africa and the West African subregion. Regardless, our practice requires us to create the chance for inputs. Inputs enable multiple perspectives likely to enrich deliberations in the direction of a well-considered final decision. It is because of this that the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Tech Fund convened this public hearing so we can all be part of the decision-making as stakeholders. Idea for all of us all to be conscientious with our submissions bearing in mind our obligations as citizens with participatory roles in good governance. We surely look forward to a productive public hearing going by our apparent zeal while wishing you a successful deliberation. It is now my pleasure to declare the public hearing open on behalf of distinguished senator Dr. Ahmed Ibrahim Law, the Senate President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much for listening. This is his prepared speech. My distinguished chairman, distinguished colleagues, earlier I was talking about senators who are representing border communities, and I think if my... Our statistics is right, Senator Tolu, I think we counted about thirty-three senatorial districts. And this is not surprising because Nigeria's border is said to be about 1,608 kilometers, spanning from the upper north down to the coastal areas. With Benin Republic who have 809 kilometers, with Cameroon is 1,975, we chart 85 kilometers, and with Nigeria Republic 1,068. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, all these borders we all know. Many people have said our borders are porous. How porous is it? And there are well-structured studies that tells us what happened in and out in these borders. What do we make out of the dynamics at the border area within the context of our relationship with our neighboring countries vis-à-vis our position in both the subregion and within the region? To my mind, this is a critical missing link. And you think if you look at those at the coastal area too, a lot of piracy and so many other things that goes on there is left unstudied except where there are few reports of pirates that have been caught and things like that. But we don't have dedicated scholars that we have put in to look at all of these things, gathering intelligence for us, gathering patterns, gathering exactly what is happening and how those things that are happening are changing. I believe this is the key imperative for why this institution is very, very necessary, especially at this period in our history. We all know light vehicles and other forms of ammunition are coming into this country unchecked, except a few seizures that we see. If you have a border study, scientists have a way of doing their things, researchers have a way of doing their things, they will gather all the data for you because they are not doing that under hostile condition. They are doing that under a condition of cooperation and partnership with some institution across the border. So this is why this bill is critical. And I think in the course of debating this particular bill, it was unanimous that yes, the necessity for this bill is not in doubt. But what we are here to do, like the Senate President said, is for us to get the input of critical stakeholders. While distinguished senator Odebwe might have invited people from Imebo and Embalo, I want you to know all the border communities in Nigeria, you are representing them, and also from the border community, and from Borogu, and Borogu also has a border with Benin Republic, a very long one, between Koala, Niger, and Kebi. So the issue at stake is very, very important because if we don't take action, if there is going to be any trouble, those of us at the border will be the first ones to be watched. And we don't want to be watched. We don't want to be watched. So this institution is very necessary, but I want those who are here, who are experts, who are community leaders, to be frank in looking at provisions of the bill so that at the end of the day we will have a bill that will solve a problem, not create a problem. I think that is why we are here for this public hearing. With these few comments, Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, I want to urge us to please say it as we understand it so that at the end we will all be happy that yes, there is a National Institute for Border Studies that is designed to take care of Nigeria's border. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
And sincerely thank you for making time to attend this very important public hearing and epoch-making event. To begin with, it is important to note that conversations on border revolves around a widely recognized multi-layered societal phenomenon related to the fundamental organization of the society. It is today studied under what is known as border studies with the sole purpose of interrogating the intricacies and social phenomena comprising the state and its borders. Other studies has today grown and reached a very important milestone of having its principal provisions, peculiarities, problematics, and methodologies systematically explained, not only in its own textbooks, but by also having an entire institution dedicated to its research and study. The rationale for this bill therefore is no different as it seeks to replicate the establishment of similar institutions dedicated to the study of borders in Nigeria, for Nigeria and by extension for Africa. This is even more compelling for Nigeria with over 2,000 border entry points, legal and illegal, and the country's total land borders measuring almost 4,500 kilometers. There is the need for the country to do better with the way it's positioning, it positions itself in terms of human capital and indeed the infrastructure of managing its international boundaries and borderlands. Further to this, global practice in most countries have taken a leap in institutionalizing research and training for the improved management of their borders by creating educational institutes to cater for the teaching, research, management of their borders and entry points. Working with established security outfit and border control agencies, these international institutes have helped their own countries in improving the security architecture of the country and of course managing the influx of people and goods. It will interest you to note, Mr. Chairman, that we have a lot of write-ups and support that has been forwarded to us from scholars from other African countries, from Mali, some representative of African union, I also believe, from the professor-in-writers. A worthy example is the Cross-Border Institute at the University of Windsor in Canada, created with a vision to create highly efficient safe borders that honor national policies and enforce national laws while causing minimal destructions to legitimate cross-border activities. Another worthy institution that has done absolutely well in the area of border management is the University of San Diego Transborder Institute. There is also the Border Policy Research Institute in Washington, Washington State, Northwest USA, which provides a very germane reference point in the way countries of the world have been very positive about border issues. We also have institutes with similar mandate in India, in China, and more recently in South Africa. With the security situation of our country that we are currently facing as a people and the huge percentage of it tied to issues around the control of arms and the influx of illegal persons into the country, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, you will agree with me that there is no better time to have this institute than now, when fears arrive about the annexure of the countries on man territorial margins and peripheries. The institute, if established, it will be an interdisciplinary center that critically examines borders and borderlands with a view of deeply the understanding of a whole range of issues. It will also operate as a postgraduate institution expected to run both full and part-time programs, award certificates, diplomas, high degrees as appropriate. Cooperation, partnership, and networking collaboration will be forged with relevant scholarly institutions, research communities, establishments, and other stakeholders in Nigeria, in Africa, and the world at large. Imebo, the proposed site of the institute is a very welcoming, dynamic, and productive border community in Imebo for local development area of Ogun State. The institute's location is expected to cater for practical on-site experience of border dynamics and reading for students and researchers as well as further broadening their horizon as regards nature and character of the problems in research and teaching about international boundaries of borders. One other unrivaled advantage of Imebo as the chosen site for the institute is the existence of a research and training institution of a national and international reputation, the African Regional Institute, which was registered limited by Guaranty in 2007, which began operation informally as African University Institute in October 2005. Generously to be pleased at the disposal of the upcoming National Institute of Border Studies and the entire invaluable resources of this pre-existing research and training institution, which include a permanent site of 320 hectares of state government acquired land transferred to the institute by the former governor, Othobakbe Ngadaniel's administration in 2007. Items of furniture, tables, chairs in the rented premises that serve as temporary sign courtesy of the famous German technical assistant agency in its support for the African Union border program in Addis Ababa, which in turn had recognized and used this Afri in Imebo as its research and training institution and perhaps the most invaluable is. The Afri's foundations president and writer's professor Antony Ijaula Ashiwaju Emefah, who is Africa's lead on border and borderland scholar and policy advocate, who by chance also turns eighty-two tomorrow, April 27, and is happily here with us this morning. An institution worthy of being institutionalized in its own rights, Professor Ashiwaju has personally pledged to lead to the National Institute of Border Studies Imebo when established is where border research collections, library, and archives. Prof, we thank you, sir. Finally, like all the other good people in Ogun West Senatorial District, the people of Imebo are very warm, hardworking, civil, and exceptionally hospitable. Highly distinguished Senate President, sir, the presence of this public hearing of the paramount ruler Obakeni Uweli and the ally-in-law Obakembe Alavi Oladinte Akokwu on Imebo of Imebo and several other high-ranking royal fathers who have come from Yewa Traditional Council, including two of our senators. And Mr. Chairman, I must say, this is one bill that has been supported by all the three senators from Ogun State, Senator Fukuli Amosu, Senator Lekom Mustafa, and myself are all in support of this bill. As well as also, we have two former senators here, Senator Yagua Heshlo and Senator Bajomo. And elite organizations that have turned up for this public hearing speaks volumes of the ultra-preparedness and indeed eagerness of the people to receive and host the institute. Are the shining array of academic and government experts present here this morning, most of them colleagues of Professor Ashiwaju and other collaborators on this existing Imebo initiative, and it will begin to dawn on us the intellectual support that awaits the upcoming National Institute of Border Studies Imebo. In concluding my remarks, distinguished Senate President, the Chairman of the Committee, esteemed colleagues present, other experts, ladies and gentlemen, while most sincerely thanking you all for your interest in the bill for the establishment of National Institute of Border Studies, may I seek your indulgence to conclude with a quote from Ben Shapiro's work, "The Right Side of History: How Reason and Moral Purpose Made the West Great." He wrote, "The best countries and the best societies are those where citizens are virtuous enough to sacrifice for the common good but unwilling to be forced to sacrifice for the greater good. Flourishous societies require a functional social fabric created by citizens working together and, yes, separately towards a meaningful life." I believe quite firmly that as leaders and stakeholders seated here, we need to make the required sacrifices for the security, welfare, and well-being of our people, most especially at this time, which is the greater good for this institute, which is the greater good that this institute seeks to provide in the long run. I thank you all, and God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just before you come up, may I kindly request your permission to recognize the presence of distinguished senator Solom Ola Olamilekum Adeola, who would like to welcome you, sir, distinguished senator. We also recognize the presence, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. One of the temptations that have come over me since this ceremony began is keeping to the etiquette that was so articulated to us that we must not clap. Otherwise, all these presentations that have so far been made sounded so much like music in my ears that at every turn Senator Bajomo has to put his feet on my own, not to clap. Mister Chairman of Committee, of Tertiary Institutions, and Tech Fund, and members of the Committee, I want to thank you most sincerely for accommodating the motion for this bill as made by our old son, our very, very cherished son, Senator Tolu Odebwe of the Ogun West Senatorial District. I want to thank Senator Odebwe for his sustained interest in this matter. I have really little to say than have been said, and that will be said. Then to say that the issue of boundaries and the scientific study of boundaries is a must. And also to say that creating a specialized institution for teaching and for research on this subject is global. It's a global trend, and as Senator Odebwe has said, there are so many institutions all over the world dedicated to this subject for reason of the ubiquity of boundaries as borders and the challenges that are posed almost similarly across the globe. To propose a bill for the creation of an institution of this nature by Nigeria is a demonstration that Nigeria indeed is a leader in this continent because if created, this will be the first. This will be the first kind of tertiary institution dedicated to this subject that Africa has always waited for. I know that there is a West African institute in Kivat, which was created collaboratively by ECUAS, by UNESCO, and by the government of Kivat in Bahia. But I also know that because of the rather dispersed support, institutional support, the funding support has not been particularly derising, and the institute, as we speak, is in the kind of kumatos. and the institute, as we speak, is in the kind of comatus. The National Institute for Border Studies in Imekor will be different. It will certainly be different. Because from the the trend of support that I've seen, like the chairman said, he asked whether there are oppositions to the bill, and Senator Badjomo told me he has not and will not come. And so, as in the marriage ceremony, since there is no opposition to this bill, whoever has the tendency to oppose should keep silent and remain silent forever. Boundaries, the concept of boundary is a very, very elastic concept. When we say border, we are referring to international boundaries, which will be the focus of this institute, the study of international boundaries. However, there are also other subcategories of boundaries that must interest this institute. I'm referring, for example, to other special boundaries, special boundaries like those within the state, the 36 states and further capital territory, the 774 local governments. And the most problematic, the boundaries of areas of prescribed of authority of our traditional rulers. All of these are special boundaries that impinge on the management of our international borders. And the National Boundary Commission would bear witness to the fact that problems that come to them come to them from these various dimensions, extensions of national boundary progress. A second subcategory that is also very important that will interest research and training and research and teaching in the proposed institute is what we call functional boundaries. Boundaries that define mentalities like ethnicity, like race, like gender, like occupations and professions. And I will quickly illustrate how this impinges, how this other subcategory also impinges on the problem of borders, the occupational, for example. We are living witness, thus as other parts of Africa are also a living witness to the issue of occupational conflict between pastoralists and settled farmers, between nomadic pastors, or what we call, in popular Nigerian language, Hadha farmer conflict. Not only in Africa, in Mali, in Burkina Faso, in Sudan, in southern Sudan. I know, for example, because of my involvement with this issue, that the Bororo, who are not Fulani and are not even Muslims, don't originate from the same historical source as the regular Fulani that we know. They come from southern Sudan. These Hadha farmer classes impinge on our management of our international boundaries because of the location, the location in ungoverned and ungovernable spaces along across our international boundaries. The Boko Haram phenomenon is northeast. The Banditry is northwest, and so on, are known to be based in areas along our borders that receive little or no governing attention. So, I'm trying to say that the issue of boundaries is bigger than just international boundaries. And like the Senate President, represented by Senator who spoke to us here, has said, "Research scientists, when they have a way of putting this, but whatever way they do things, calm data collection, even karma analysis and teaching, the offer advantage to the policymaker, to the policy decision, decision-maker, that are poised to be knowledge-led, as I have seen here demonstrated in terms of preparedness of this great Senate, to be led by knowledge." I was the chairman at the Hoover Institution for War, Peace, and Revolution at the University of Stanford in 1979. I was in privileged county of laureate, Nobel laureates in economics, in political science, in sciences. The Hoover Institution is the Republican Party's think tank in US. What I'm trying to say here is that whenever we have tea, we have coffee, those of us in different areas of study, we are not bothered to do research and publication in any particular way, but our publication must be made available to Hoover Institution. It is this way that the the American politician and statesman gained. Because at the end of the day, the man of affairs, who has power for taking policy decision, has no time for research. And the man of science, whose business is to collect data and analyze data, has no power for public decision. I think it was Woodrow Wilson, the 28th president of the United States, who says that progress of any society is in regular interaction between the two. And I want to say this Senate for demonstrating his preparedness just to do that by the decision to support this bill and make it quickly pass into act and into a complete institution in Imekor. I want to conclude by saying that the National Institute for Border Studies in Imekor will be a very great company. And Senator Odebie has mentioned some of our prospective international partners. What I need to add, what I need to add is that the students that will benefit from this institute are not just the mainstream scholars, who are going to be very important, those who want to do study degrees, who want to study higher degrees, lower degrees, further degrees, masters, PAT, as the bill is empowering the institute to do. We have the expectation that the operation of that institute will draw participation, student, and studentship from the mainstream border management outfit, border management outfit, particularly the well-known security outfits, customs, immigrations, and so on and so forth. Besides, besides, the staff of boundary management mechanisms that have been put in place, namely, the National Boundary Commission. When we created the National Boundary Commission in 1987 by law, 1989 by institutionalization, we did so, and we all learned on the job, no proper training. That's why the revision of the original enactment law of 1987 in 2006 has to review. But in the meantime, the operation of the National Boundary Commission will benefit from irregular bringing of their staff to the institute in question. The National Boundary Commission also has, by extension, all state boundary committees, all local government boundary committees. We, in the, my expectation is that the new institute will cater for specialization needs and expertise needs of the staff of these committees. I want also to finally say that the institute positioned in Imekor and standing on the existing protocol of African Regional Institute is going to be almost instantly, almost instantly, an institute that Nigeria is creating for the benefit of wider area of EBOAS and African Union. Remember that the institute is also going to be a contribution to border region development, facilities, development, progress, programs that are put on the border. Whenever decision-making is on the use of such institutions within the boundary, they must keep in mind that the institution will be infiltrated from across the border. That has been the experience of planning for border region development. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I bring from Imekor the attachment, I've already sent the memorandum. I want to present the attachment will not be on the memorandum. And so, I want to conclude by presenting to you the attachments to this presentation, which will be in the form of... No, to him. I'm going to go to him.